Good evening and welcome to the January 19th Planning Commission meeting. And just want to give a couple of reminders before we get moving on our agenda. We invite you to pick up staff reports that are located in the back of the room. And also for those viewing and hearing this, I wish to follow along. The agendas are posted at sanbruno.ca.gov. And all Planning Commission meetings are recorded and will be replayed on Thursday, the following Thursday, at 2:00 p.m. And I ask you to please turn off your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samut?
Here.
Commissioner Marshall?
Here.
Chair Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Here.
Commissioner Mishra?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Vice Chair Chase called and he will not be able to be here tonight.
And if, can you please say this in a fudge of words, Commissioner Marshall? Thank you. The next item of business is a motion for approval of a minute.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I move the minutes to be approved with a minor typo that I'm giving to staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And communications, please.
Just as usual, that people at home can find our packets at sanbruno.ca.gov in the Community Development section.
Thank you. The next item is a public comment. If anyone has a comment they wish to make that is not listed on the agenda, this is the time to do so. And you are limited to three minutes, and if you can please state your name and your street address, or street name, rather.
My name is Elliot Eaton. I reside at 145 Santa Dominga Avenue, and I've been a resident here for about five years. I stand here as a citizen that has recently engaged in activities with Transition USA, which is a group that's dedicated to helping bring new sustainable principles in building, food, and transportation. And I've been recently speaking with some of the commissioners here and some of the staff, and I'm hosting events once a week at my property discussing things such as sharing business building and business growth throughout our city. That's what I'd like to state and open expressly welcome.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you very much. And item number four is conflict of interest. Do the commissioners, if there were anything on the agenda to create a conflict of interest? Okay, good. First item of business, actually it's not the first, but the first public hearing piece is 171 Alpine Way. In a request for a use permit to allow an addition which increases the gross floor area by greater than 50 percent, per Section 12-200, 030B1 of the San Bruno zoning order. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening. This application is to allow a rear addition that would increase the floor area by 56 percent cumulatively. The site is 7,700 square feet. The original house was 1,925 square feet, and they added, a previous owner added a second floor in 1989. So if we take that 1989 addition and the current project and add those together as the code requires, the project requires a use permit for greater than 50 percent expansion, in this case 56 percent. The current project is for a sunroom, which would be 391 square feet, located to the rear of the existing house. As a sunroom, it would have prominent windows to let in a lot of light and warmth in the rear of the home. The project does comply with all development standards, and the use permit is only for the 50 percent expansion. I would like to spend a bit of time on the neighbor comments, as we did receive quite a few for this project. When we sent a courtesy notice, we received comments from six neighbors total. Five of those neighbors opposed the project, and one supported the project. Their comments are detailed in your staff report, and the written comments are included as an exhibit, but I'd like to go over some of those key points with you. One of the major concerns is in relationship to parking. All five people that were opposed to the project reported that there's a large number of cars associated with the house, and that parking is a big problem in the cul-de-sac. Secondly, several people also reported to us that there's really a lot of people living in the home, and that they had talked to the property owner and that rooms had been rented out. And the third issue that I wanted to highlight was the fact that there have been shuttle vans parked in the cul-de-sac on a regular basis, and this raised some concerns with neighbors in regards to whether they were allowed to park there, and what their restrictions were, and if a business was being operated. So as the commission is aware, when we're talking about parking, we don't have the authority to regulate how many cars people have, or where they park them, if they are parked legally. And in this case, we may have had some instances where cars were either blocking driveways or parked for longer than 72 hours. And so staff has informed the neighbors, and we would certainly encourage the neighbors to contact the police department when this happens, because that really is the remedy. It's not related directly to our authority to regulate their land uses. It's more about people not complying with the vehicle code. And so staff will continue to follow up with those neighbors and remind them of what those rules are, and encourage them to get help, to get enforcement when they need it, and hopefully that will improve the situation. And we have already begun to hear that there maybe is an improvement in this area already, since this project has been underway. In regards to the number of residents that live at the house, this really is an important issue to the neighbors, but one that we have to be very clear about, and that is fundamentally, we as local government can't mandate who lives in the house. We can't tell people who they can cohabitate with. And it's perfectly legal and reinforced by the courts to say that unrelated people are allowed to live together as long as they function as one housekeeping unit. And so the next step to that is, okay, well then what makes up a housekeeping unit, and how do we look for that? And so the two major things that staff looks for when it comes to seeing what a housekeeping unit is, is if they only have one kitchen in the residence, and that is true, in this case, there is only one kitchen. And secondly, is there internal circulation? Do all parts of the living area connect to each other? Does it function like one household? And in this case, that is true. Staff has been at the site in several instances, and the bedrooms and all of the living areas are accessible to each other, and they are not closed off from the major living areas. Staff also did quite a bit of follow-up in regards to the concern about shuttles. We have been in contact with the shuttle service and confirmed that they do have a commercial location, which is not located in San Bruno, and the resident of the home does own the van that he uses for his business. But all of the business contacts, paperwork, computer work, dispatching, all of those activities are done out of the commercial location. And so it is permissible for him to park the shuttle that he owns in front of his residence when he is not at work. And so that was staff's finding in this area. This also, though, is related to the previous comment about parking within the vehicle code, and that shuttle has been seen to park for greater than 72 hours. And so that reminder has been given to the household about making sure that the shuttle complies with all vehicle code requirements. But they are in compliance in this regard to our local home occupation requirements and business licensing requirements. We've also checked to make sure that there was no other small business associated with the site. There were some concerns in the past that a business was being run out of the garage. Staff has not seen any evidence that that is the case at that location. Staff has also outlined for you in the staff report the two previous code enforcement cases that have taken place at this site with the current property owner. Staff has met with the current property owner on several occasions, both in the office as well as at the site, to really reinforce what our expectations are for compliance with the building code process. We can report that the most recent code enforcement case was closed in a prompt manner when staff asked them to demolish that previous addition in order to go forward with this process and bring the house into compliance. And so we have seen some improvement in the property owner's willingness to work within the system, but staff can understand why that has been a concern of the neighborhood before. And we have coordinated with our building inspectors as well as Code Enforcement Division to work together on this application and really increase the likelihood that the next portion, the next project, will go very smoothly and within the municipal code requirements and meeting building code expectations. So staff does recommend approval of this project after quite a bit of work on the applicant's part to improve conditions at the site, as well as quite a bit of work on staff's behalf to look into those neighborhood concerns. And we recommend approval based on findings 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 25. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to ask staff, is there something that leads you to believe that the applicant will follow the conditions in this permit and not create additional unapproved uses?
I think in my conversations with the applicant, they have increased their understanding of the process, and we have, our communication has improved as we have gone through this process. We have attempted to include conditions of approval that highlight our expectations in regards to parking and use. And so we do feel comfortable recommending approval at this time with the knowledge that we'll be in good communication with them through the construction process and potentially beyond, to make sure that they're in compliance.
And did you discuss with them the limitation on construction time?
We have not specifically discussed the time limit ordinance with them. This is a relatively small project. We would always do that at the pre-construction meeting, and so we have not discussed it up till this time yet.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. And if the applicant can please step forward, we'll open the public hearing and give us a description of your project, please.
Hi, my name is Lu Guan. I'm the applicant project. And this is Mrs. Chen. She is the owner of the public.
Can you please give us a description of your project?
We are going to do a sunroom approximately around 391 square feet, why against the existing living rooms. And this should have addressed in the attached staff report on page, there's no page on it, but it should attach on the staff report as a drawing showing exactly where the location of the sunroom, and how big is it, and all other information regarding to these projects. It's like a lower mansion is a pretty small project, because right now the existing living room is facing the west side of the, it's facing the west side, so, and it is enclosed by glass curtain, curtain wall made by glass, so during the summer and also at the winter, and it's extremely cold or extremely hot. So that's why my client wanted to do a sunroom at that location, so she can, one way to expand the existing living space, also can keep the living room warm at the winter, also cool at the summer.
And you understand that it's not a space that's habitable?
Yes, that's correct.
You understand that fully?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi?
One of the neighbors, in their letter of complaint, or comment, rather, said that the garage is finished and you guys never opened the garage door. Is that used for storage of automobiles, or are people in there, or you storing stuff in there? What's, how do you use the garage?
According to my client, it was a garage. It always been a garage, but according to what she told me, she said her friend had a house that is full close, and her friends wanting our space, put the stuff, her stuff, her furniture, so her friend stored all her furniture in her garage temporary. But however, though, this issue has been taken care of. The planner was there inspect the garage, and those furniture had been moved out, and it's right now is used as a garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
Are you the designer, then?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you a licensed engineer or architect?
I'm just a designer. I'm not an architect yet.
And what measures do you have in mind to keep the roof from leaking? The way it's designed, it forms the two roofs above that area tilt toward each other.
We're going to create a cricket, create a roof cricket that slope the water from the high point to the low point and direct to the gutter, and there's a down spout via the end, and then it will drain out to the sidewalk, either to the public walk or to the existing sewer, existing public water system for the storm drainage.
Thank you.
Any other question? I have one last question regarding the actual sunroom. Is that being designed, is that being implemented by a specific company, or is this something that's being constructed by a contractor?
It's going to be constructed by contractors.
So you're not using a specific, like a sunroom company that comes in?
Yes, yes.
You are? Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi?
I have a question on your sustainability checklist that you filled out for this project. It says you intend to use water-conserving plumbing fixtures, water-saving appliances, and insulating hot and cold water pipes. And in this drawing, I don't see any plumbing going on at all. How carefully did you fill out that form?
Yes, that's correct. There's no plumbing fixture going to be installed, but I will go back and look at it again and see if I can, you know, make a revision and submit again in the later on, at the building
Question for staff. Does it really go back through readmission, or is it something they just go back and fill out a new, a new form for the sustainable building checklist?
I think the best route we would take, if it were approved tonight, we just have them refill it and have it available prior to the pre-construction meeting that we have with the building inspectors.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Through the chair, one other question.
There is an ordinance in the city that limits the amount of time you have to complete the construction. If, for example, there were a limit of two years to construct this, from the time you take the building permit out, do you have any problem with that? Would that be difficult, or would it be achievable?
It's achievable, but it's a certain condition. It really depend on my client's budget, or also, and we had to locate, because when I look at the planning, start the staff report, there's a lot of different conditions. So we really had to look at carefully, and study, and see where we go from here, but there's a lot of different conditions, like the fire department sprinkler, and that's really, pretty costly to do it, just by adding, by adding a sunroom, but we had to pay extra money for the sprinkler. That's something we need to consider. But we really want to get to the site permit, get to the planning, and see where we can go from here.
Are you aware that if you fail to complete the project within the permitted time, that there may be extra fees before you could continue?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, I had explained it to my client.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're aware of that, because it's, staff said they hadn't discussed it with you, so I want to make sure you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, when you indicate that you're getting the permit, and then you'll see where you go from there. You've submitted plans, and so that is where you'll go from there. It doesn't create a new project or try new things. There's a plan in place to be implemented. So can you explain what you meant by that statement?
What I mean is, it's like I said before, there's many different conditions, and we had to work on the budget and see if it's that doable. I know, I know the planning, the planning department has spent a lot of time, and my client also spent a lot of time to try to get the project to pass, to approve by the planning department. But she's confident, she's, she knows, she wants to do it. That's something I want to emphasize, so. She wanted to do it. She wanted to do a sunroom. And so, so it's difficult, but she wanted to do it, yes.
Well typically, when you pull out a permit, you have plans to do, I mean, to move forward on a project, you have your budget, you know the cost of things, and there are circumstances that come up, but typically you know the steps along the way. And of course, circumstances, situations change. And however, hearing it from the very beginning that you're going to look at this to see if it's something you're moving forward, gives me not a feeling of confidence that you're moving forward with the intent to build this project, like you're moving forward and considering to see if it's a possibility. And it's been my experience that people pull permits to be able to finish a project with the intent to finish a project, and if for whatever reason things come up, then those circumstances might drive in a different direction. But you're saying it earlier, you're saying it at the time of the beginning, so I just don't feel the confidence that this project will go in the direction as presented.
Yeah, as I said before, it's, there's other conditions that may alter the project to something like the budget, and for example, I, this other project I'm working on, they are terminated due to the budget issues. So we, she wanted to get it done, but from this point, but maybe a month from now, half a year from now, there maybe there's money issue, and there's some other issue pop up, she may, you know, she may end up not to do it at all, so.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have something you wanted to add?
No, it's okay.
I have a question for you, actually, and probably when we go back to planning and commission discussion, I'll ask it at that time. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this project? Hearing ended, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Public Commission or Planning Commission discussion.
Through the chair. I got a question for the staff. Now, this room is not to be used as, I think our word is habitable, but habitable means, I mean, you can't be in it at all. I mean, it's not to be used as a bedroom, right? Correct?
Sleeping room, yeah.
I would look at the conditions, is there a condition that really spells that out, and what the penalties are if it's caught there? Or is that just a general, or is that just general plan, planning that you cannot use it? I couldn't find a condition that says it cannot be used.
It's not in there. It would be something through the building code, but we could easily add it to this.
I mean, just so they're specifically aware of the penalty of if they're caught using it for sleeping or any other use, but sunroom uses.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Yeah, I'm okay with the project, with the exception that I don't think they filled out this checklist for sustainability very carefully, so I'd like to add a condition of approval, that they submit a letter to staff explaining how they intend to accomplish each of these items, and make that part of the record, and that's subject to staff approval.
One more question for staff. If the applicants do get a permit and start the construction, and then get as far as the fire sprinklers or something like that, and can't afford to do it, and the structure's already up at this point, what are the penalties?
Basically, they would not be able to complete or finalize their building permit within the given timeframe, so we actually have penalties per day that are built within the code when you exceed that initial six months or 12 months to build it. The other thing that we could do, if they were, let's say, 90 percent complete, and they just didn't put their fire sprinklers in, sometimes we ask them to put a deposit in $5,000, $10,000, and then they have to meet, they do a compliance schedule, and they have to meet with that compliance schedule to put the fire sprinklers in eventually. But it's pretty expensive if they go beyond it. It could be up to $200 per day if they go beyond the six to 12 months that they have to build their, build their sunroom.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra?
I have a question for staff. I broke something. Sorry for my voice. I have a question about, why is the fire sprinkler required in an unconditioned space? I mean, there's no HVAC, there's no furnace, there's nothing in this room that should be hazardous.
That's probably a question that I could come back to with from the fire department, after I check with the fire department. But it's my understanding, when there's a low water, low water pressure and the gallons per minute coming off the fire hydrant locally, when it's below a certain threshold, that's when they require for any type of addition, whether or not there's combustible materials there.
Okay, because I feel like this is an unconditioned space. The use of the space would be fairly limited based on what appliances or, you know, what amenities you have available. So I would have to relook at that condition of approval.
Sure. What we'll do is I could, if it is approved with that condition, as the fire chief has recommended, I could go back and speak with him and see whether or not that he truly intended for that condition to be there, and if it wasn't, then we could override that condition.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
One other thing on the fire department, it says provide hardwired smoke alarms with battery backups, as required by the building code. Would that be for just the new addition, or would the entire building be subject to all the bedrooms?
I believe it's just the new addition. Although they do have to make sure that they have, all the fire smoke detectors are working with, throughout the house.
But they wouldn't have to hardwire?
Yeah, they wouldn't have to hardwire.
Right, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the Planning Commission approve Use Permit 9-118 based on findings of fact 1 through 6, and conditions of approval 1 through 25 with additional conditions. 26, that this space is specifically not to be used for sleeping, and it must comply with the code on its use. Condition 27, that with the adverse slope on the roof, it clearly may leak, and the applicant is cautioned that any leaks in the roof are completely their responsibility. Condition 28, that the applicant provide a revised checklist to meet with staff approval. approval. That's it. That's the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Through the chair. I, I have an issue with condition number twenty-seven.
That's the one about the?
That the, it is the owner's responsibility and that they've been cautioned. I would, I would prefer that to be added as part of the minutes that they've been cautioned and not as a condition of approval.
On which one? The roof may leak?
The roof may leak and that the applicant has been cautioned for that.
Well, I'm putting, the, the reason I made that motion with that condition was that the design is such that it almost assures a leak at that point unless rather skilled designers and construction people work on it. So I, I'd like it in there so that, that it'd be pretty hard to ignore it. People come back against the city all the time on, on permit issues, and I don't think the city should be exposed to that. So that's, that's my motion.
Through the chair.
My, my reservation for, for that condition is, is because approval of, approval of any plans by the city does not, does not alleviate any responsibility of the designer or architect or engineer from meeting code requirements and therefore drainage requirements, and they're always subject to, you know, responsibility for their design. And so I, I kind of, I'm hesitant to put that as a condition of approval.
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I could make a recommendation, what you could do is say that the applicant shall design the roof set system to prevent leaks and that this design shall be approved by the San Bruno Building Division. That way, they are, it is noted within there that, and will noted in the minutes as well that we have to be cautious when we're reviewing this, and it will be part of the pre-construction meeting as we're going over the, the conditions of approval.
Does that meet you? Okay, I'll take that, I'll take that revision.
I can live with that. Thank you.
Through the chair. The item about the revised checklist, I also wanted a, a letter of explanation if we can include that.
A letter of explanation of the first one or the second?
The, the checklist, how they want to accomplish those items.
Okay, I'll take that amendment.
Thank you. And I'll second that as well.
The move in second to approve. In fact, actually, we've had all the discussion on it. Going on to the next item of business. That's right. Sorry. This back and forth, I think I had to stop and think for a moment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Motion carried. There is a ten-day appeal process before construction or any action to be taken on this, this project. You're welcome. And the next item is city staff discussion.
We just have the one item, and that is the February eleventh Architecture Review Committee. Do we have Mr. Peterson?
I mean.
Commissioner Mishra, Commissioner Bisari, and then Commissioner Smook play backup. That's it. Also, I, there was, I know there were a number of conflicts and a number of the planning commissioners weren't able to make it to the planning commission and city council joint meeting for the zoning code kickoff, but we'll be able, we all, we have audio of that meeting if anyone wants to hear it. We also have, we'll have notes that basically go over the bullet points, and you could always call us with questions and we'll keep you informed. We're going to have a website dedicated to the, dedicated to the zoning code update. There's also going to be multiple check-ins as we progress with the zoning code, so there'll be plenty of time to, to comment as we go through.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mishra.
Aaron, could you help me out with the, the passage of the Cal Green and how it plays into the zoning code? Not really zoning code, but just the passage of Cal Green last week?
In terms, I'm going to have to get back on, I haven't really, we haven't really considered it yet, but there are a number of, the general direction that we got from the city council as well as the planning commission is that they want to see a sustainable code. So as, as things progress in California and green building standards progress in California, we're going to make sure that we're at least, not only consistent with that, but be on the leading edge of it.
Through the chair. Yeah, I was at that meeting as well, and I have some comments that city council made, but I'm going to reserve those to the next meeting so we have a chance to prepare and talk about that.
Great.
Discussing the next meeting, I wanted to also, also note that I will not be in attendance at the next meeting. I will be in Australia with my son and grandson. Okay, and the next item is planning commission discussion and appoint, and appointing of the next chair, and I'll turn that over to you.
All right. So I think everyone in the planning commission is familiar with the process. Historically, how we've handled it is that the chair becomes the vice, the vice chair becomes the chair, and the person who has not served as the chair for the longest amount of time becomes the vice chair. So right now, Kevin Chase is the vice chair, so you will still need the formal motion in, in second to make him the chair. And then Commissioner Peterson has been, is the person who has not been the chair the longest, so historically he would become and we'd need the same motion in second as well. So I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. So who would need a motion?
Do we know that, through the chair, do we know that Commissioner Chase wants to do it?
Confirmed. Looking forward to it.
He's also been the vice chair the whole time.
Oh, I know, but just, I just want to make sure.
He has, had opportunity, yes.
I remember he enjoyed it from his last term.
Doesn't seem so long ago. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move Commissioner Chase to chair and Commissioner Peterson to vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And so I would just like to express my appreciation to the staff that have had work. We make our jobs actually much smoother to be able to move forward through the process. And I know that you have an excellent leader, and through that leadership and through your hard work and your intelligence, it really gives our city the opportunity to move forward on projects, and I want to just personally thank you. And it's a pleasure to be able to volunteer and, and support the city in all, in all of this. And thank you to my peers, commissioners, for your support through this, through this year, and I look forward to stepping to the side and doing work from the sideline.
Through the chair. The staff would also like to thank you for your time as chair. I think the last time that you were, you were chair, I was probably an assistant planner just starting off here, so.
I think you were in fifth grade.
You were. You're very lucky, which is my pleasure. And so under, on those comments, meeting adjourned.
Great.